Johnny, if you ladies in the prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
She's got the Catholic version. We're doing the Catholic version.
We moved it.
Oh, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I got full of the Lord.
Yeah. We move the flag. We're saluting the Lord.
All right. We roll call.
Haley, she's in the hall.
We have so many guests.
We've lost. Okay, all right, I can do a roll call. All right, do you have a sheet? I don't have her sheet. She don't have sheet. Okay, okay, all right. Rainie Rensh?
Here.
Beau Barton? You already marked it, okay. All right. Who sits next, Melinda? Melinda here, I'm Baron Glass, Maria Bass.
Here.
Johnny Fallon.
Here.
Gary Gassels. We have a four. Barely.
All right, the executive committee went through all the checks. Everything was good. This is the first month this year that the sales tax has actually been up over last year's sales tax. Thank goodness for that.
Keep shopping local.
Maybe it's a nutrient, maybe it'll keep going. And, um, all right. Anybody, the, uh, we need to approve the minutes from last, uh, last meeting.
How about we approve them?
One second.
Colin Flaver. We need to recognize Michelle Bassett as the December Employee of the Month.
So, thank you. Well, good afternoon everyone. Mary Michelle.
Michelle, yeah.
I'm on out, Michelle. I told her she's got 15 minutes fixed ready. But let me brag on your December 2024 Employee of the Month. Michelle Bassett does above and beyond and does amazing things for her kids. Always offering a helping hand wherever it's needed. She is a doer and a giver. She will jump at anything that needs to be done without being asked. She does not boast about all the extra things she does to her brothers who might guess she expects anything in return. She has a servant's heart, what a wonderful testament to what you do each and every day. So I present to you December 2024 Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Michelle Bassett, for your dedication and commitment to our communities, our schools, and our children. Proudly sponsored by Health Community and Leadership. Congratulations. Thank you.
So do you want to lift up?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it all.
Next, we recognize the Teachers of the Year, our Support Person of the Year, and our Principals of the Year.
All right, so this is the first time we have done this. Um, we just decided that this year we wanted to, at the end of the year, in May, we always recognize the district, um, Teachers of the Year, Support People of the Year, and Principal of the Year. We decided this year we wanted to recognize all of our school-level people. So y'all are like the inaugural class of being recognized at the board meeting. So this time, um, I do want to recognize those that are on the Teachers of the Year. So if you are a Teacher of the Year, if you would just please stand. And we have just a little, um, we did a little Facebook shout-out because we have this here, so I want to just present that to you. So I'll start with the little ones. And so Kelly Early Childhood Center is Ms. Michelle Bassett. And then our Caldwell Parish Pre-K Teacher of the Year is Ms. Hannah Codlin. Grayson Elementary Teacher of the Year is Ms. Hillary Hester. Our Columbia Elementary Teacher of the Year is Ms. Kelly McElwain. And our Union Central Elementary Teacher of the Year is Ms. Casey Carroll. Our Caldwell Parish Junior High Teacher of the Year is Ms. Tori Mergard. And our Caldwell Parish High School Teacher of the Year is Ms. Rachel Queen B. Christian. So we are super proud that they're, of course, elected and voted on by their colleagues and their coworkers. So I know that you're, they're proud for you to represent our schools. So Haley, picture.
Yes, one of just them right now.
Yeah. Um, we're gonna have to somehow come this way.
We have no room.
You want to take this one this morning?
Yeah.
Let's come here, in the middle. We'll come in the middle, do not sit on the floor.
I don't want to.
You're the biggest class. All right, y'all, ready? All right. One, two, and three. I don't have y'all in back, all right. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you ladies.
Thank y'all.
And now we'll recognize our Support People of the Year. And so from Kelly Early Childhood Center, Ms. Brittany Breland. Our Caldwell Parish Pre-K Support Person of the Year, Ms. Suzanne Kelly. Our Grayson Elementary Support Person of the Year, Ms. Lisa White. Our Columbia Elementary Support Person of the Year, Ms. Carly Beckley. Our Union Central Elementary Support Person of the Year, Kadisha Tatum. Our Caldwell Parish Junior High Support Person of the Year, Ms. Claudia Lamb. And then our Caldwell Parish High School Support Person of the Year is Jermaine Thompson. And he is at a basketball game tonight, so he's not here.
We need a picture of y'all.
We bounced this one, thank you.
Well, there's no way we could function in our school without a student. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you, thank y'all.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you ladies.
And then the last honorary is our Principal of the Year, and that's Ms. Melissa Gilpatrick. And she was chosen by the directors and the principals and all the supervisors, so.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Aw, thank you all so much.
And the people in the hall can come in.
Yeah, they should come in.
They need a sign too.
Okay, yeah, Grace Young, come on in now. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was hot here. I was, that's all right. I was trying to find somebody.
Sorry. I was like.
I know.
So next, we're gonna recognize Jana Bennett. She's our, uh, our 4-H, well, our just LSU Ag Center. Did you have an update?
Yes, sir. All right, so I gave all of you, um, a little update so far through the year. Um, so far, we have 207 in our enrollment. We still have some, um, enrollment cards coming in, junior high, high school. So we hope to get at least 250, possibly 300 members this year. Our club meetings, we're doing life skills, and you can see that. That's all 4th through 12th grade. And then our Clover buds, we got that starting back this year. We're doing second and third grade. And we're using Dr. Seuss books to teach social emotional health with those students. And then you can kind of look there of our entries. You'll see our camp photo there at the bottom. And then on the back, that was our 4-H University. Um, students who attended our shooting sports. This year, we've got 57 members. We had an extra instructor. Uh, last year, I think our number was around 35. So, you know, we've really increased with our shooting sports. And then our junior leaders, that's our most recent picture there of our junior leaders who did our Christmas boxes, um, last week, I believe it was. And we have three of those junior leaders who also serve as regional leaderboard members, and they do regional events. And then I have two of our, um, 4-Hers with me tonight. They both serve, y'all come on up, as president of their fifth-grade club at Union Central Elementary. We got Ty Prim and Ella Tarver. And so they're gonna speak to you just a moment, tell you about their favorite thing about 4-H.
My favorite thing about 4-H is that it teaches us life skills that we need.
My favorite thing about 4H is that it teaches us life skills that we, we use in, well, things like la- laundry and birthday and.
You don't have book clubs?
No.
And they both attended 4H camp this summer, Ella just got back from shooting sports camp also. But we thank all of you for your support. And, and Mr. Rentsch, we have to brag on him, he helped with our LEAF ID contest and has attended some of our meetings.
Yeah. It's a great organization.
Good deal, we're proud of y'all.
Thank you for being here.
Yes. Thank y'all.
Should've told them before in our story.
Thank y'all.
Next is accountability update.
Okay, um, you have in your folder, I think I'm in there, um, you have a copy of kind of the breakdown of the scores. Um, it has the past three years, um, we met. We met, um, back in what, September, I think it was, when the assessment, when we got actual test results. Um, met with the principal, met with all the board members who, um, came and talked about what our scores were like. So this, what I presume is not really a big surprise because we talked about it then, we kind of knew where we were headed and what we were going to have. Um, so the high school was still an A, um, and you'll see this is their, um, seventh consecutive year to be an A. Actually, it's eight if you count the C COVID year, but we didn't get a score, but we did get a score. Um, dropped a little bit, but they did improve in assessment index, so the test scores went up and our ACT index went up. Um, I think the reason that the score dropped a little bit is we had some students that did graduate on time. Um, so we had a few little hiccup's in our, in our cohort graduation data there, but. So that fluctuates from year to year based on who comes in the newbies. Um, junior high grew again, so they're still in C. The junior high also had, um, growth in their assessment index, which is actually just their test scores. Due to that growth, they came out of urgent intervention for the students with disabilities, we have subgroups, and so they had been in UIR for students with disabilities, so they came out of that. Um, they're still in UIR for, um, subgroup for African-American students, but they did grow and they're scheduled to come out next year with test scores that will get each firm, so they've been showing growth consecutively. Columbia, we did drop with Columbia, but we had talked about that. Because of the restructuring, Columbia only got third grade scores, so that was it. So where before they had had grades three through five and all of that growth, they only had grade three, and their growth had to come from Union Central, they didn't have any growth on their own because of course third grade was the first one to take the test. Um, so, you know, that had a little bit to do with it. And Grayson is just kind of hanging out there by themselves because they have no tests. Um, since they're K-one, there's nothing that counts for them, so they had to take Columbia's assessment scores and Union Central's for us. Um, there was a difference, if you noticed there, and we did notice there was a little bit of difference in assessment, so I'm not sure, we didn't get an answer for why that was. So I don't know if there was some holdback kids somewhere in there or what exactly happened there, but there was a little bit of difference in their assessment score. And then Union Central grew and they became a C. Um, with Union Central, they grew by seven points, they also showed growth in their assessment index. Um, they're still in comprehensive intervention, um, CIR, but that does allow for money to help them work, um, to keep that growth going. Um, and they're still in UIR for their subgroup of African-Americans. When looking at the subgroups, most of our subgroups showed growth, so we're seeing, you know, that growth there. Um, okay, the next slide really just kind of what I told you.
That's how I use this.
Um, and then the last slide is just, um, we always do this, it's our comparison or comparing our parish to the rest of our region. So all of these schools are schools that fit in Region Eight, um, and it just kind of shows you where we fall. We're always in the top three part as a district, we watched Caldwell West Carroll. The ones that are pink are the ones that are ahead of us. Um, and you're going to see, I looked at it, the progress for K-eight and the progress for high school, you see a lot of districts are ahead of us. But if you look at their assessment index, they're in the twenties and thirties, so it's easier to move a kid from unsat to approachy basic. Where we're moving kids at a higher level. See, that was my, kind of my reason for that, because, um, they're growing from a, a different place than we are. Um, as usual, we were higher than everyone, or pretty much everyone on DCAI, and that's making sure our ninth graders are on track by the end of ninth grade. Pretty high on ACT index, um, than most of the region. And then we kick everybody in grad index, cohort grad rate, and actual graduation rate. Because we get our kids certified, we make sure they graduate on time, and we make sure they get the extra things, like university students getting certification, university kids taking EDD classes, going on the classes, getting club credit. That's where all those points come in.
Let's get to me. We get one more year under this accountability system, and then everything changes.
Yeah, wherever I showed you the new accountability system, that starts twenty-five twenty-six. So this year's scores will still be under the old, but then we'll change everything.
So our goal this year is to knock this out of the park, on the way out.
Question? All right, we'll get up.
Okay. She said it's in New Orleans.
My name's Love Day.
Okay. Got to flip back to the sales tax part on, uh, under executive committee, page eight, two, three. I want to point that out, it's way more complicated than, it's way easier to understand it. I look down towards the bottom, just green shade, uh, at ZZ off on the left side. Changed for twenty years, and here I'm comparing year-to-date, two thousand twenty-five tax collections versus two thousand twenty-four by various categories. The first category is column one, uh, column D, that's motor vehicles, there's only one member in that, obviously. Second one is column E, remote sellers, only one there. Then we have dining, groceries, vape vendors, hardware construction, fourteen, auto-related nine. People over a thousand dollars but are not in any of those first categories, there's sixty-two of those. Everybody else is under a thousand, six hundred fifty, so we got about seven hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty vendors paying in. Uh, going back to the bottom, that green line, uh, remote sellers is up eight thousand dollars. Dining and groceries up sixteen, and then hardware is down seventeen, auto-related, you know, that's white nap or people like that. Uh, down nine, other that's greater than a thousand's, that's down a thousand. And then the big one is, all the vendors that are paying are less than a thousand dollars permitting per month for sales taxes. That one's down thirty-two cents. Uh, penalties and interest, I mean, that's kind of not relevant for it. So anyway, that, that explains how we're down ninety thousand dollars. And I did skip the first col- uh, column D, I'm going to backtrack, that one's down forty-seven thousand, not, but, uh, that's a time difference. If y'all remember, if you look further up, uh, line one B, that's the second section. Uh, there was ninety-six thousand dollars under column D, part of that went up to the prior, prior year. This year, I did not, I made sure we did it correctly, so that's the reason we have a decrease there. Really, we're up seven hundred twenty-eight dollars from what we, on a cash basis, we're down ninety, which is the important part, so that's based on how much we're paying. And flipping back to, uh.
Is that, is like purchases of, of vehicles?
Yeah, and that would be from out of, obviously out of the area.
Yeah.
Wherever you buy your vehicle, it does not matter, you pay your sales taxes based on your work.
Ms. Elsie brought that up when we were talking about sales tax today in the staff meeting, that, you know, less people are buying cars right now because of interest rates.
Can't home, so when you're losing all that money because the interest rates are too high.
So hopefully we can, we can see a shift in that.
I mean, the hardware section does show a big way to decrease. Motor vehicles, I, I mean, we're, we're even basically, so, uh.
Well, I did my part.
I bought a truck, so. Anyway, and now flipping back to section G, you know, the financial update. Uh, first page is the balance sheet, and, uh, the November column is way over on the right. Uh, we're, we have about seven thou- not seven million dollars in cash, about four and a half million of that is listed as. Uh, receivables, that's the yellow line, we got about two million dollars hanging out there, that's the sales tax, uh, property taxes on, on the court cases out there. Uh, the first nine hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, tax condition is supposed to be ruling in January for the Scott, Scott Meredith. And there will probably be a bill, which is how it's always gone apparently, uh, the tax, uh, payer. And that will be ruled in district court maybe in March, so there's a little bit of daylight. And then it'll probably be appealed again, but the last time there was appealed, it went to the Supreme, State Supreme Court, and that one said that we're not going to do it. So that point should be dead, and we should give that person that. And then we have to go through the process for the sec- for the, uh, property taxes for this year twenty-three and twenty-four.
Which are the places of the, of the tax.
And, uh, I'm sure this year twenty-five is probably going to be added.
What do they do, they, they appeal each year, is that, so each year has to go to court?
Yep. They rethink.
And they lose, and they, they lose twenty-three and twenty-four, but twenty-five is because that's the court.
Well, they're going, hopefully, but the fir- the first line is tax years, uh, or our fiscal years, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. That's the first.
That one just sprinkled.
That's what's, what's tax condition from the second of January.
Previous year.
Yeah, the previous years were already rolled on.
They're done, they're on the way to shipping.
And now we're into fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, for a billion, and then we have twenty-two, and twenty-four, that's the second billion, this is a different lawsuit.
Do we know the reason why for this? Why, why would, you would hold that?
I, I, I don't know. The big, the big issue is, I, I don't remember a lot of the, the dimensions, but if you have a, a gas line that's un- that's underground, and let's say that it's twenty-four inches. They're only pushing twelve inches worth of gas through the line, so it's paying based off that one time. It's no different than if you have a house with a mother-law apartment behind your house, and your mother-law has his own, you're still paying taxes on the house, on the second house, it doesn't change. So, I mean, that's, that's our, I think, sort of sound, it's been approved by the court, ruled by the court in our favor previously. We're not seeing a change in that.
Don't they have to put that money into an account, a separate account?
Send the sheriff's account.
It just sits.
They pay, they just haven't.
So they're not drawing the interest off of it, it's just sitting there.
Nobody's drawing the interest.
Which is frustrating, because if we had it, we could be drawn.
I mean, that's eighty thousand dollars sitting in the bank that we couldn't draw. So, and, and the sheriff, by, by whatever law there is, has to put it in a non-interest bearing account, I don't know. So, probably goes back to the rules. So, uh, so anyway, that, that's the balance sheet. Uh, general fund on the next page, I don't, I, I mean, it's kind of where, where we kind of expected it to be, uh, we're short. For the year, six hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, that's more of a, uh, reverse back quite a bit by the time we get to January, the property tax money, and then of course we'll finish out the year with nine hundred thousand R D Ls. Uh, sales tax, you know, we had a little bit of limber of hope, a little bit of light this year, about this month, with an increase of the prior year, about five thousand dollars in current, we're, we're down, uh, about a hundred and eight in that one, uh, as compared to last year. Uh, lunch fund is down a little bit, a hundred thirty-nine last year, a hundred and four this year. We paid out quite a bit on supplies, that's two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars this year, whereas we were two fourteen last year. That's probably a time difference, I'm kind of assuming, I didn't put it back with that, but I imagine that two fourteen is probably a little long. And then maintenance fund, we're, uh, way around the world last year, last year we were down two fifty, and this year we're down two seventy. And of course, that one being bounced quite a bit when we also get property taxes coming, so, I mean, that, that's not unusual. And, you know, hopefully we break even on that, and that's subject to perfection, so hopefully we can have even more than we. If you think maybe, you know, bill storms, number one, so five storms, no break rule, maintenance. Hey, it was, oh, uh, hold on, uh, and we paid out the five hundred thousand, of the, uh, thousand to two thousand, thousand dollar stipends, these numbers sits. So, that one is maintenance costs, so, that's all I, and.
That's it? All right, uh, next, we're looking at the results of, uh, the election on the property tax. Uh, it passed, thank goodness, and, uh, you got anything to say about it, other than that?
Thank you, that's the way out and voted, was low voter turnout.
Appreciate, appreciate the support and, and, uh.
It doesn't matter, as much as you try to get the word out and, and advertise it, it's just, you know, winning a lot on the ballot, so I'm thankful for those who did get out and vote, so.
Do we have a vote on that, that we accepted election, I, I would.
We can.
Let's just do it, do we say it?
Just to be said.
Prove the results.
We just don't have to.
Accept the results, so, yes.
But I would say that we accept the results within the election, uh, actually, motion assessing, but I.
Second.
Motion.
Call of favor?
We'll try to figure that out in that time, because we got people coming up in the next quarters, and then we'll be done for a while.
All right, uh, district leader updates?
Um, I think this is just a little infographic that we had, uh, shared out with our performance profiles. It's not, not like the SPS, but it's a long, it's saying, um, Chris. So for our district's score, we're at five point eight-two, that was a small growth, um, from last year. We are above the state average, which is five point four-nine. Um, we did look at it the other day at the staff meeting, we were talking about, so we're tenth out of sixty-six school districts. And I was looking at Christie's thing, so there are only three, um, districts in the north-east region that are, um, in that top ten. West Carroll is number two, and they were number two, you know, so the other, East Carroll is right behind them, which is kind of surprising, and then Morehouse is in that top ten. Um, Franklin is tied with us, so they're tied for tens. So, um, that's, that's good, and the others are all like the south, you know, um, scores, so.
And that's impressive.
So, um, Lollies, um, has a score of four point eight-five, which is proficient. Um, the rating scale is on there, so they're pretty solid, right in the middle there, it's kind of, I'm not going to say they couldn't grow to the next level, but it would, it would take a good game. Um, Kelly Early Childhood Center is five point nine-six, which is high proficient, there are only four tenths, you know, can be an excellent. The pre-k had the largest growth, um, it's point two-nine, they're six point one-six, which is excellent. They are also recognized as on the top gains honor roll and the excellent honor roll, so we will really crowd that. And I took this, so, and like Christie does the district one, so I went through all the, the sites, there are seventeen hundred eighty-seven sites. But of course, some of those scores repeat, so I didn't think about doing it until later this afternoon, so I didn't, I, so the pre-k is sixty-third out of seventeen hundred eighty-seven sites. So Kelly's going to be a little farther down, and then Lollies will be all down at the bottom, but I'll, I'll see where they are too, but, um, but we're proud of all of them. I mean, that's, our district is probably some, so we'll keep working on those, and I, I don't see any reason why Kelly won't be in that excellent, like, fixtures role, so, but we were proud of them, so.
Good job, congratulations. All right, um, Ms. Lollie, Rentsch?
Oh, I got you a little Christmas cheer, and I hope you all have a safe and lovely holiday, Christmas holiday and the new year as well. And Nicky will give it to you on, uh, at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Maria?
Just we're in the middle, in the middle of the year testing, and so our, uh, our deadline is next Friday, so you should have K to three, but we're doing. Just way in the middle, in the middle of the year testing, and it's under, uh, our deadline is next Friday, so you should have K to three, but we're doing four through six next week. We're in the middle of testing.
In the middle of Christmas.
Yeah, that one is probably the thirteenth. And full moon.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Adams?
Well, she just said. We have a few memes, we've been passing back and forth of what we look like at the end of, uh, testing day, but, yeah. I hope y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Brian?
Hello, hello, please.
Okay, all right, any principles ever, do you?
We had a nursing home come today, that was so nice. The kids absolutely loved it, our giant kids, uh, drove them around in their wheelchair, and gave them hot chocolate, and we sang Rudolph, and it was precious. And tomorrow we have that start, and then we're done with our tours.
Yeah. All the different schools have been coming in touring, and of course they've all decorated their own, and they've all got so much going on, and, um, I, I tell them all the time, I send them one of their attendance, and it's like, yeah, they're coming to school for this. They enjoy all the activities y'all have planned for.
And it keeps the community together, and they all just go in, and it's great.
Well, and too, you know, um, when you're kindergarten, first grade, you don't know what the other schools look like, mister, you know, when you, when you're that little, you know, you're thinking, you know, wow, the junior high. You know, but, um.
You're gonna be looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's, you have to see what they're gonna be doing in the next several years.
Thank y'all.
So, Rhett, any news?
All right, all I have is that we have a half-day next Friday, they'll get out at, at noon for a two-week, much deserved, well-needed Christmas vacation. And then, uh, we do have our, um, basketball recognition for the holiday tournament, um, and I'm gonna let Melinda kind of tell y'all about that.
We have a fine arts building on December twenty-eighth, from two to four. Ms. Vaughn McKippen's gonna be there, uh, Ms. Gabe Greer is gonna be there. Pam Kelly said she's probably not gonna make it because, uh, Christmas holidays. But we're gonna do like cake and punch, all that, Nikki doing her magic talking about, so. Everybody, please come, please show them how much we appreciate and everything they did in the past.
The fine arts building, December.
Twenty-eighth.
And.
At two to four. Can you get some of your people to make pretty signs?
I will, yeah. The tournament is that weekend.
Twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Yes.
And Abby didn't have a schedule made out, so we just did that, uh, that.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Sounds cool, right in between Christmas and New Year's.
I had a message from Brad.
Okay.
I wrote that, he had a deaf in his family language, so would you please read this for me tonight? I said, yes, I will. Um, he had a few people that he did want to say, uh, something to, you know, we could get them all in one swoop. Um, Ms. Marcia Johnson, Nikki McCann, James and Christie Wells, Angela Gillett, Mary Lally, Michael Floyd, Melinda Ballard. I want to express my deepest gratitude and the kindness and support you've shown following the passing of my sister last week. Your condolences and thoughtful gestures have provided comfort during this incredible, incredibly difficult time. Knowing we have friends like you to lean on is that more than words can convey. Thank you all for keeping us in your thoughts and for your unvibrant compassion, your care and support have been a true blessing, a heartfelt appreciation, very blessed family. Um, I did get all of you registered for the conference, we have seven more members filling, and so if the Golden Nugget Awards are my emails, it'll be a resurrection space.
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas coming up, uh, we won't see y'all till after Christmas, so, uh, till we meet again. Hope everybody has a, a great holiday, and remember the reason for the sixes.
Make a motion, we adjourn.